Thought we had Michelle, not you.
Sorry.
We're happy to have you.
You guys want an upgrade? I'm happy to step out.
Happy to have you. It's all good.
On my screen, you were in the center square and now you bumped over.
I know, I just saw that too. We're just, we're allowing a couple of minutes for a bio break since the last meeting was so long.
That's where I was just now, so. Late TMI.
How's everybody doing?
If you guys run a real breakout room, I would have sent a search party after a while. That was, took you guys a while.
Vernon School Board Meeting to order at 9:16. Thanks all for joining. I don't know that we have any opening items. We covered, for anyone who's joining us, just briefly, we covered a lot of the, of our normal meeting business in the SAU Board Meeting. So if there's any questions about any of that, you can go and review the footage from there, or we're happy to answer questions here too during public time. I also just want to make a quick statement that we do recognize that public time did not make it onto the agenda this evening. Just an oversight, we're happy to handle, we're happy to hear from the public and handle your questions, so I will let you know when we have that time available. Did anyone have anything that they wanted to add for opening items, board members? Was there anything that? I don't think so. Okay, Adam, did you know of any opening items?
No, the principal and superintendent's report took care of all of those items.
Okay, perfect. So, knowing that, let's move right into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda items one and two as written? Steve, thanks.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? I don't see any on anyone's faces, so hearing none, we'll just need to do a roll call vote to accept the consent agenda as written. I'll call you off. So Jess?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lawrence, yes, thank you very much. We are on to an update from Michelle. Adam, do you have that update or? Oh, actually, we covered that in the last meeting, so I know it's on here.
Well, the only thing for this meeting would be, does the board have any inclination to spend anything from the assigned fund balance? My recommendation to you is not to, given the low number of economic climate, but it's, you are prerogative and you should have the ability to weigh in on that.
So I'll go ahead and open it up to discussion. We have so few people on that if you are, if you have something to say, why don't you just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Anyone want to talk about it? Steve?
Adam, is it a big worry that we're left with such a small amount?
Well, I, the, the rule of thumb is you want to end up with between 1% and 2% of your operating budget. So five and a half million dollar budget, we should end somewhere between 50 and 100 grand if we're doing things the right way. So in a small budget, maybe you go a little higher than that, but I think we're, I mean, we're projected to hit 111 and 127,000 on the expenditure side, so because that, we lost 50 off the top for the account reserve fund. So I think it's an appropriate amount. It means we budgeted pretty well, pretty close. So.
How many outstanding expenditures do you think are going to come as a result of this? Between now and the end of the year. I mean, the reason why I asked in the main session about projects being done in the school prior to the end of the school year. If we're not using the building, there's no reason why we couldn't have somebody strip the floors now and then save on the manpower hours during the summertime, while they're still in this contractual year. I mean, that's the, that's the piece that I'm thinking about for initially savings in this particular fiscal year, but clearly next fiscal year.
Yeah, that's a great point. We are in the middle of a changeover with our facilities director, so I don't have as much confidence that we're on top of it as we've, maybe normally would have, or will have, I should say. But I do know Michelle is being pretty thoughtful about doing the work we can do now.
Okay, so I take that we're not going to be able to do some of those projects before the end of the calendar year?
No, we are doing some stripping and waxing and all of that stuff now. That is happening. It was now.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not 100% confident it will save us a bunch because we're still going to be paying the custodians over the summer. And so they'll have different things to do over the summer. It'll be the, you know, the cleanest building we've ever had when the students finally come back. But I'm not, I'm just not sure what it saves us in terms of man-hours.
Okay, so they're under a contractual agreement then to pay them regardless of, okay, thank you.
Is there anything that is a dire need that could be addressed? I mean, I don't think there's anything that's safety-wise.
There isn't. John would know better. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you remember, we've kept that list the last couple of years of things we want to tackle at the end, at year end. We've done those things. There's still, there's always more to do. But my read of the economic interest of the community is to play it tight right now, return as much as possible. That's what.
So Adam, I guess I'm confused. So they have a contract, which I get, but if there's no work to be done, why would we have to pay them to keep shining the floors and doing whatever they're doing? I mean, once the building's clean, why would we need to still pay them 40 hours a week to do what, I guess?
Fair question. So when this whole thing started, we committed publicly that we're going to pay our hourly employees through June 30th, even if they weren't working. They are working, and through June 30th, we've got things for them to do. It's not as strenuous as it normally would be. Don't get me wrong. Easier pace and we're getting much more down in the weeds than normal. The new school year starts July 1st, new fiscal year, that's when contracts come out. And so we can either lay off those people and attempt to rehire in the fall, or we have to keep them on during the summer and find unique things for them to do over the summer. The reason why that's preferred is then before the economy and unemployment went south, it's really hard to find good people that clean well, work hard, are trustworthy, and aren't stealing things from us and aren't addicted to anything, being very candid. The thought of going through that rehiring process after laying people off for a month or two, cost benefit analysis to me isn't worth it. If it was, if we thought that the whole next school year was going to be shut down, then I'd say, yeah, it's time to scale back and have a custodian for the building for the year, not the, the, the normal amount we typically have. So I, I agree with you, but it feels like we're treading water intentionally right now. On top of, I don't know what's going to happen over the summer with ESY in the building and how intense our cleaning protocols are going to have to be to have three kids in the building over the summer. So.
Just, just a quick thought, but maybe we should, and I, I met the new director, I think, during the Mount Vernon Open House.
Yeah.
And he was, I think he was doing a little bit of recon, which
Definitely was.
He, he seems really sharp, first impression. So I gotta believe that he's going to be up to speed really quickly for us, which is great. But what if we had John or yourself just ask the, ask the custodial crew what they thought they could do during the summer? Some projects that maybe wouldn't cost us any money for materials or anything, but maybe they've got a list of stuff that they, they would like to tackle that would improve the school.
That's a great question. I can look into that with Michelle.
Thanks.
John?
Just also to point out, you don't have three, and I know you know this, but just a reminder to the public, you don't have three full timers. We have three staff who are on. One is full-time as the lead, and the other two gentlemen are part-time, both working, much less one that's trying to remember the hours, but they're both part-timers.
Thank you. Steve, during the SAU Board Meeting, you did bring up a couple of things that you had noticed around the school. Should we talk about those briefly and just see where they should fall on our list?
Yeah, so the roof over the, I don't even know what you call it, the cupola or the overhang over the back gym doors where the dumpsters are, those shingles are completely curled and exposed. When I was riding behind the back of the building, I noticed like three or four shingles missing above the sixth grade wing. Now, whether or not that's going to be caused for a leak, I don't know. That's why I brought it up tonight, but clearly somebody should probably take a look at that stuff.
Taking notes. Yeah, we'll take care of that. And, and we are getting to the point where we've got the money for the roof, so we, in the next year or so, we're going to have to start thinking about when the right time to pull that trigger is.
Exactly. And when you take a look at the unreserved balance from now, I don't know if we're going to have the 50,000 for next year to apply for that. If we're looking at 20, $29,000 left over, that would all go back to the taxpayer. I mean, it's just such a diminutive amount. It's not going to really be anything that we can apply to something.
Just a point of clarification, that 27, 908 is after 50 grand is taken off the top for this year.
For next year?
Well, next year, we have no idea, but this coming June 30th, Michelle's projection was a fund balance of 161 minus the 50 that goes to the, the fund, and then 111,908 is left over. So we have $112,000 unassigned fund balance. She labels that we projected we'd have 84, so there's really 27 above what we projected we would have.
I misunderstood. My apologies. Okay, thank you. Doesn't change my opinion that, that we shouldn't really use any of that. It should all go back. Okay.
Seeing everyone nod their heads, I mean, I'm getting the feeling that we're in agreement on that. I don't think we need an official vote on that, do we, Adam?
Only if you wanted to spend the money.
Okay, so just raise your hand. Do you think we should spend the money? Anyone have anything they want to? No? Okay, so then I think we're good. Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion on that? John, did you have anything that you wanted to add in that regard?
No, I know, I feel like that, I know that the roof area that Steve's referring to, it's actually the maintenance office and storage area off the back of the multipurpose room that, that roofing is an issue. I know that the previous John Robichaud, so the current or head of facilities already knew about that and made note of that with Eric and myself, and had talked about it at that point, and we're looking into it, and yes, I'm sure they'll be handed off to the new.
I just want to echo what Peter said about getting the, the team together to come up with some projects, because I know windows probably need to be cleaned on the exterior side. They're looking pretty rough. I don't remember recalling the, the big evergreen bushes in front of the old kindergarten wing, the first grade area, but the bird garden looks awesome. So if they could do that type of work between now and, and the end of the year, while they're all still reporting in every day, would, would, would be a huge service, because I remember, was it three years ago, we received a lot of negative feedback from the community about the appearance of our building during the summertime? And clearly, if, if there's capacity today, we need to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Agreed.
Thank you. Um, we are going to move on to our first reading of policies, DAF, EHAB, IJL slash KEC, and JICI. So unless anyone has anything that they want to discuss about this tonight, I think we can just view this as a first reading and move on in the interest of time, because we are a lot later than we normally are. Does anyone have anything that they want to discuss about those policies? No? Okay, seeing none, I'm going, going to go ahead and move on. So we're up to the point where we are at our school building goals update. So John, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Yes, thank you. So just, I'll, I know you've had this in the packet, but I'm just going to review. So the objective of having a physical activity program for students after school beginning in October 2019, I think we're on a really great path, and as you noted, I think I wrote in here, the connections that we had, I feel like a lot of things were working really well. Sadly, then we went to remote learning and that changed all these plans. But I was excited at the next meeting that we were about to have, to be able to share with you the re, the restart of our track teams and the commitments we already had to working with AMS and doing competitions with them, as well as the combination of towns that typically met over the years passed in Milford on a weekend day in May. Again, we were all very excited about it, looking to just truly focus on the fifth and sixth grade for the end of the year. But previous to that, had a lot of great feedback from the students as well as some families about how the program had worked straight through, just before leaving, actually, it was the end of that last rotation. And then looking at the New Hampshire SAS, again, we won't be able to look at that this year, but knowing again from our winter data and how we looked at NWA when it came to math, our students had really excelled from the mark, from the ball mark to the winter mark of NWA. And classroom and teachers had taken a full account of everything that was going on. Again, attributed to a lot of things that were a year of math. Looking specifically at the work that our math interventionist, Charlene Brown, had put in, along with trainings that she did throughout the school year at specific staff meetings that we'd had all the way up through and just beyond the Christmas holiday break, which were again on a really good trajectory. And again, her collaboration with, with teachers and co-teaching lessons, of course, continued throughout the year as well. And of course, the house system, which all of you, and I think with the exception at this point of Scott are a part of, so I'll make sure she gets back to him on that. Our MTSS had started to meet, had not been as successful, I hope getting it started sooner in the year, but at least there was a system created just prior to us leaving out and started to do some of the meeting and discussions with students and with teachers, I should say, and about supporting students through the MTSS process. And then moving to using Empower, I mean, a lot of that great success happened back in the first, if not definitely second market period. We're looking to use that tool, of course, as we continue into next year. But staff, as you already may know, we're looking at our K through, K through four students getting sent home or getting sent a report at the end of the year. That's more a narrative piece, just due to remote learning and the challenges of trying to grade K through four system. Five and six are actually pursuing with the grading and the narrative, and will be sending that home shortly after the year ends, looking at probably the following week. Questions about any of the goals, the objectives, I should say?
Steve?
So John, first of all, thank you very much for the synopsis. I really wish that we saw a lot of this stuff actually pay out or play out through the rest of the year. Unfortunately, we didn't get that opportunity. How, and Adam, I guess this question's more for you. How are we going to work with the new principal to sort of carry the torch on some of these goals that are basically, could receive an NA? And make sure that, I guess, like, year of math for, for an example, right? And so we don't want to initially do a year of math 2.0, because the whole point of it was to actually raise our math scores. I've got strong concerns, and I know talking with some of the parents in town, they've got strong concerns about this huge pullback for the fall, and specifically in September, of kids just not being ready to, to, to run in that first exam on, not only New Hampshire SAS, but also on our other testing programs are just going to be so subpar. Like, how do we, how do we start from scratch there, I guess you can say, or at least, you know, start from the dugout instead of at-home play?
Well, that's part of my onboarding process, and Dr. Sarfati is putting together an entry plan, part of which is going to include getting up to speed with board meetings, goals, et cetera. She's already read through a bunch of minutes. One of her first questions to me was, why can't I find the board meetings online to watch? And so she's already invested in getting up to speed and hitting the ground running, and that's, and luckily, John's not going to be far away and will be a part of that process, but it's my responsibility to get her up to speed.
I would say also the transition, there are things that obviously I realized that and I want to expect her to take on pretty quickly. I, I don't know what you'd have to do to remove the house system if you so wanted to, because I think it's so entrenched already in our culture that the students and staff look forward to it as much, equally as much because of what's, what's been inspired through it. I think the house system itself, and whether it just plays on some fictional characters and books that they've written in the past, but more so just the excitement of knowing that they're working on challenges. I will tell you that there were a couple of times this past year when we started those challenges, that students would come up to me and/or other staff, they were remarking as well to Charlene that they are hungry for the next month, like, they just can't wait. Are we going to do a challenge today? Are we going to do a challenge next month? Are we going to do, so they are that engaged and that excited by it. And the staff, as you know, is very open and receptive to a lot of the great work that was being done, and I would say just as much in it as the kids. So I don't think the math in particular, I mean, granted, the goals and things will change slightly with Dr. Sarfati, but I feel if anything, she's got a great ground already covered by the current practice that's happened this past year. I'm also realizing that, like, some of our expectations and understandings are kind of curious where NWA, and I wonder even if New Hampshire SAS to some degree, changes their perspective when it comes to looking at end results. Because of course, this has been impactful, not just here, but around the globe. So NEOAT, we know is an international test. It'll be interesting to see how it changes what's expected to come out of this.
Adam, how soon are we going to intervene in the fall in terms of trying to assess where students really are at? Are we going to try to do that in the first couple of weeks, or are we going to wait until the first NEOAT test occurs in October?
No, so it, it actually starts this June, when our, our, our teachers spend extra time documenting where kids have ended this school year, or wherever that may be. And then, as I mentioned, the SAU meeting, teachers are assessing every day. They're, they're figuring out exactly where their students are at, to figure out where they need to go. They, they're, they're not teaching division to a, a group of kids that doesn't know multiplication yet, and that's on the macro level. The micro level, teachers are adjusting all the time. But our NWA is going to start pretty early in the school year. We haven't figured out exactly when, but early to make sure that we know where our kids are starting from, because there, there's going to be deficits for sure.
Anyone else have questions or comments for John? No? Okay, thank you. John, thanks very much for the update. I know, I know it's frustrating because so many good things were, were in action, but we certainly appreciate the point that you got to with it, and, you know, even though it's not playing out the way that we all would have hoped, it doesn't make the achievement any less. Um, it's actually a really good segue to be able to move into our curriculum coordinator overviews. John, I want to thank you first for presenting those in written form so that we have those. Is there any point, I mean, there's quite a lot to it, so is there anything that you wanted to, to highlight in those reviews?
Nothing in particular. I mean, looking at all four of them, and to be honest with you, it was not as much my work as my work looking to the staff to get those things as as necessary, right? So trying to get those together, thanks to the staff that we have, and trying to assemble all the information, it was really their work. I would obviously echo again back to math and looking at all the great stuff that was happening there. But even in science, I mean, some of the great stuff that was going on with the mystery science materials and storage space in the school, I think are things to note, just made it easier to use and more convenient and welcome for all the staff to kind of access and take part in. Um, yeah, yeah, there's nothing in particular. I agree. There's a lot to go through, but I think it's just all, again, continues to be a lot of great work.
So I guess the question that I would have for you is, you know, this is highlighting all of the really great stuff. Do you see any areas that, that are presenting a challenge in, in any of the curriculum, or any areas that people might need support going forward?
It's a great question. I think off the top of my head, no, but I could definitely go back through this and get back to you probably before or within the next meeting, or June meeting, to share that information with you. I don't think there is anything at this time, but, but again, I'll review it again and go over with the staff and see if there's anything in particular, if you like, could be hit a little bit more.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so I know our Spanish faculty member is on the call right now, and I see the D down there in the bottom right-hand corner. How advanced are we getting? Do we still need to rethink that curriculum? I know we wanted to go into a year sort of analysis. We didn't finish the year, but in terms of redesigning that program, whether or not we're going to focus only on fifth and sixth graders, because there was such an enormous deficit at the middle school. Were we at the point where you're comfortable making that recommendation now, or are we still got?
So we are actually doing a world language update as our, as our next point.
I didn't know if we were blending this all together. I'm sorry.
Before we get there, just, I'm looking at the other board members. Does anyone have anything else that they wanted to add on the curriculum coordinator updates before we move into world language? I'm not seeing any, no. Pete?
Yeah, I, I just, it may not be the right place or time to say this, but just sitting here, listening to John and Adam and stuff like that, as we, we get into the, the fall season. And we have, unfortunately, probably a larger number of students who are, are, are behind or that gap. I don't know how we go about getting the word out to the community that we could use some volunteers for tutoring. And I don't know how you qualify people to be tutors, or whether that's an opportunity where, you know, we have people that are retired or just have some time, then they're able to do math or science or reading. I don't know how that works, but is there an opportunity for us to have, you know, a network of eight to 15 or 18 people that are welcome to come into the school and tutor some kids that are, that are behind, and that the staff, quite frankly, just doesn't have the time to invest in beyond what they normally would do? I don't know.
Well, I'm willing to share a little bit more here than what I was willing to share publicly at the SAU meeting, only because it's a little different at the elementary level. My dream is that we can open the school year on time with kids in the school. That's the dream. If that's the case, we are receiving some money from Title I. We don't know how much yet. Still, it's, the CARES Act regulations are not out yet. But it's our hope that we have some sort of startup program for our students in the late August, leading up to the school year, where we can assess kids and give them a jumpstart on the school year next year. Because I like the tutoring idea, Peter. The, the, the very realistic challenge with that is getting qualified tutors that are available to do what we want, and how, how does that work? The best tutors we have are the teachers that work in the school already, and I'd like to get them in front of kids more if possible. So that's what we're working towards, but it's just too early to really put that out there publicly, because we're not sure if we're going to be able to put kids in school and when that can happen.
I'll, I'll chime in on that if I may too. I think it's important for, for everyone in the public, especially to know, you know, the whole world is going to be behind. And to try to cram these past four months into a small amount of time, just to get these kids caught up, is going to overload kids, especially at the elementary levels, and we really need to be cognizant of, of how we approach this. And I think checking in their social emotional first and making them feel welcome again at school, and it's not a scary place to be, because they're not going to get sick. Once the opportunity's here, should be in the forefront. The, the learning will happen. It'll come, and it might take some time, but I think everybody in the world is in the same boat here, and if, and if the higher levels aren't understanding that, and the colleges aren't understanding that at the high school levels and stuff, then we have a bigger problem on our hands. So I think we need to take care of our kids first, you know, it, it takes a village, and that's what this community is. So I think if we look there first, what we want to accomplish with getting them caught up will happen. It's just going to take some time.
100% agree.
Anyone else have any comments before we transition into our world language update? No? Okay. Thank you very much. So we are going to move into that world language update. I see that Danielle is with us. John is muted himself, but we do have in the packet, if you scroll all the way down to the end, we do have, excuse me, a proposal, or an update at least. So I'm making my way there myself.
Yeah, page 65.
Thank you. So Danielle, if you're with us and you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and fill us in, I'll give you a second, because I know timing may be odd. There you are. Hello. Thank you so much.
I, I totally thought I was just kind of watching like a la Facebook, where I could just sort of see things happening. So I had not planned to talk at all, and I know John has a nice little thing prepared, so I think I'll let John do it, and then if you have specific questions, I'm happy to pipe up with whatever I can answer, but I think John prepared it better.
That's perfect. Thank you.
The challenge.
So John, if you're still with us, I see that your, your screen sharing is off or your video is off. If you're ready to jump in and talk Spanish instruction, we would be ready for you.
Because I'm getting a haircut.
Well, what we can do while we're waiting for John, since we didn't have public time. Well, what we can do while we're waiting for John, since we didn't have public time scheduled in is if there are any members of the public who have any questions or or any comments for the board at this time, we would open up to entertain that. And Adam, I'm assuming you can see that.
Yeah. Yeah, there is only one other member of the public who's actually also staff member, but no hand is being raised.
Okay. So I guess what I would ask us to do at this point is just, you know, go to page sixty five in the packet so we can review. I'm going to try and it's challenging with the screen here, but I'm gonna lean over a little bit and see what we can do.
Well, I can talk for a minute about how I have sort of divided up the work to try to make it equal to what AMS is doing.
Okay, thank you. Love that.
I don't know if that's helpful or not. So I met with Paloma and Alejandra two years ago and then at the beginning of last year pretty well. So I have from Empower taken their playlists and what they cover so that our kids are in fifth and sixth grade together, getting pretty much what sixth grade covers at AMS. And we can't fit it all in in those two years, especially with the amount of time that we see them. So what I've done is if you go like all the way down to basics, take your colors, numbers. The kids are getting those kindergarten through sixth grade, so they should feel really comfortable with them. So by the time they're at sixth grade, we really only maybe spend a class on colors and that's more for the benefit of the kids who are just joining Mont Vernon. Like in fifth or sixth grade. Alphabet is another similar one. I don't start them right off in kindergarten because they're busy learning the English alphabet. But they do in second grade, we start with the alphabet and then they have, you know, five years, can take second grade through sixth grade with the alphabet. So there are some areas where I'm able to shorten the amount of time that the sixth graders at AMS are spending on a particular topic. And the other thing that I've done is bigger units that I know we're not going to get time to visit. I've put them in fourth grade. So for example, there's a big unit on Spanish speaking countries, other countries in the world. Learning about them. So for fourth grade in January, I've been having the kids do a country project where they work to research a country. They create a presentation. They learn a little bit about it. So it's not happening in fifth or sixth grade, but they are learning it. So they're not going into AMS with zero experience. Unless, you know, they move into Mont Vernon after fourth grade. But they are exposed to it earlier. So they've had some kind of view and learning about it, even though it doesn't fit into that sixth grade year the way it does at AMS.
Okay. Thank you. John, we are just we're in that world language update. So I know Danielle jumped in a little bit to fill us in on what she's been doing and how she's been bringing the kids up to speed. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to chime in there and let us know your thoughts on it.
Sure. Thank you, Danielle. I appreciate that in my absence. I just had to deal with a tween. As far as the as far as the program goes, I think it's it's clear. And what I wrote here is just the challenge of meeting the level of the number really of the times that students meet with the world language at our school compared to Amherst Middle School. So when you figure out our sixth graders and their sixth graders. And I think over time, many people have thought, well, you have it from kindergarten through sixth grade. Why do you need so much more in sixth grade? I think because it becomes more more apparent at that level of where they should be at and only having it once a week over the course of seven years doesn't really give time for the practice and the routine of it becoming more you know, fluent in the language, to be blunt. Say even go back to conversation, I feel like we had several board meetings ago. And the ideal at that time was like, wow, it'd be great if you just had a school that was somewhat bilingual in the sense of students and families and parents talking or sorry, staff talking in that way in every classroom. And there are more and more, I will say, candidates at times you see that they have Spanish as their background. It would be nice to have that happen more consistently, but obviously that's not going to happen anytime soon. So that's a challenge. Yeah, and I did. I did throw down a couple scenarios of what a French, I know French has been talked about also because French is also offered to middle schoolers, what happens to our students? Transitioning just for seventh grade without any French exposure at school, even just for one day a week, what we see at Amherst Middle Schools that the students have their full year of sixth grade being French every other day and then continue into seventh and eighth. So our students now who want to enter French have a packet that has to be pretty much gone through as a student does over the summer. So they basically have a couple of months prior to starting off the year to be kind of up to speed with their sixth grade Spanish French year and ready to jump into seventh grade's French, which a few have done actually and impressed by a couple of the staff members at AMS who have said, I've just really been encouraged and proud of them for actually jumping in and doing pretty well with it based on their own motivation because that's where it's at. It's interesting too, as we go into this remote learning. I just had a candid discussion with one of the world language teachers at the middle school, and we were talking about the potential, what it could look like instead of being a packet, but that's plans to come and sure down the path. So in any case, Danielle and I had spoken and we talked about the possibility of offering that probability of having something maybe as an after school club that would be given. I also throw the possibility, though I know I've talked to a couple of other elementary schools in the state who do provide world language at the elementary level. One is more programmatic based that they have a complete program as well as professionals that they almost like a contracted service, they would find somebody to come in and teach the language. They also impressed upon having at least twice a week to be consistent and that they had started their K through four buildings over in Hampton, excuse me, and it uses another school Timberland as a model. So they've been doing it now for a couple of years and they're starting to see the the work that's been done as a end result and it's been going very well as their students are now starting to transition because it's been going for five years and now transitioning into the middle school. With that being said, the idea of that having happening at AM or sorry, at MVVS. The idea of doing that threw out a possibility of adding how that could look, but also know that that changes the schedule impacting core time for the fifth and sixth graders or specifically sixth graders and also decreasing some time that they would have at the lower level. So like Danielle and I sat and tried to figure out. So if we did do that and keep the number of meeting times for students to go to a special, what could that look like without changing too much in the current schedule? It looked like, as you know, so Spanish and PE are classes where students meet with their teachers in those areas three times over two weeks. So in any given week, what would happen is that the sixth graders would keep up with Spanish thereby meeting twice a week. However, one of those second meetings would happen at a time not necessarily their special time. So they would have still have let's say PE or sorry, another special that morning and then have Spanish in the afternoon, which typically is not in their schedule and now disrupts their core teaching time. And then if it was to take, let's say, a place of a kindergarten class going to Spanish, where they would only go once a week, every week all year long. They would actually miss that extra. They would gain an extra PE time because that would be the piece that we would probably give them from the sixth grade. So again, there's there's a give and take, not necessarily the most ideal. And then the other possibility was the thought, that scenario of using what we're currently learning. As I've mentioned several times, my staff is probably sick of me saying at this point is that one of the silver linings, I feel like coming out of the virus and our actions since then of going remote is this incredible learning that's happening for everybody, even staff with the onset of all the technology. And what a shame it would be for us to literally turn it all off and then go back to teaching traditional school as we would with technology, but not in the capacity we've done now. So I thought of what would the possibility look like and using again that model that we've talked and done this past year with PE teacher and activity, what's the potential? Again, not next year, but again, looking at that model, if there's something to want to look into that students would actually have a remote day added to their week. And that model again, and that scenario too, explains it a little bit better. But just the idea that this this could actually happen and that staff member as an example is that world language teacher Danielle could actually be responsible for would be responsible for uploading all that information for students to reach to and access to at home, almost in a flip classroom model where they would do the learning on their own, but then connect with her at a given day, time that she would have set up to do one on one or small group meetings with students and not for very long, but just to check in on their knowledge and understanding, but actually do a follow through on their actual class time. So possibilities for thoughts in the future, not saying that anything has to happen now, but it'll be great to see obviously as the year goes on next year. Hopefully with more typical school time in the building and how that changes that we've made will take effect.
Very interesting, John. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for John on the French topic while we're there? No? Okay. I just wanted to circle back to the Spanish. I noticed that there is a discussion about the scoring, like grading at AMS versus MVVS. Is that presenting any challenge to changing over to a one to four scale or is it? Do you think that would work pretty well?
I feel like it would work pretty well in the sense of what the students are actually experiencing now in all their core classes. I don't think that would be much of a challenge. I think the hardest part, to be honest with you, and we've talked about this in house more so. The challenge that comes for us with every class that isn't math, science, social studies, or ELA, reading and writing is that, and I would say I'm just as guilty in the realm when I was a student. And maybe to some that now as sometimes as a parent is that we don't consider them as important and put the same value on those classes. So if we really have a serious commitment to it, the early and often idea comes in for next year and continuing thereafter is that Spanish has to be really considered a class. It does hold weight and responsibility when you become a middle schooler and then carries that weight on to the high school because we do know we're very familiar with that if we carry the language through the next three years, right, as a sixth grade and then seventh and eighth grade, they can actually access level two at the high school. I would say there probably would go with any high school, but I'll stick with South Eagan because we know that that's true at this time. So for us to actually make this commitment to it, we have to remind parents that it's an actual class, that homework does count and that the grades will count moving forward. That's probably the struggle, I would say, that we really have to make sure and guarantee that families will understand and students will understand. I think that the students will have it. But oftentimes they have it at school and no disrespect to home because homes get busy. It's making sure that the core classes are done and oh, that's not really important. Let's put that aside. And again, as families, I think might consider it's a world language. You're probably not going to be an interpreter or use it in a foreign country or in your next job. So how much value do you want to put in it? But we have to remember that again, it's still a class, it's still graded and it's still going forward with just as much weight, I would say at this point, as their core classes.
To to speak on that, John. Granted, if the beginning of the school year is somewhat normal and we do have an open house back to school kind of thing. My suggestion would be having the Spanish classes and the teacher have a a speech, a presentation, much like their core classes are to give it more of that weight because when you walk in, say hello, hola, you walk around, see the classroom and leave five minutes later. It doesn't have that. It is a class. It has that. It is an option. And and I think that if it was set aside, you know, ten minute chunk for each grade level or however the case may actually work out where it's not cumbersome. To give it a little bit more importance in the minds of the parents might be beneficial in knowing that, yes, we are at a little bit of a deficit because our kids get it this many times, they get it that many times, but it's something that will carry over. It's something that you need to think about in the future. I think it'll be more important for for the parent to sit there and hear that instead of just a quick drive through hello, goodbye kind of kind of thing.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a valid point. I hadn't thought of it that way. And you're right. And I I'd almost would suggest, I wonder if next year we just make sure that we're tackling the upper grades, right? So to make sure that maybe four, five and six are hearing that clear message. And we let almost in a sense, maybe for another year or two to just see where things are going. K three continued to be, it's an added class similar to, but that's a very valid point. Thank you.
Sure. So I think one of the things that I would want to note, Adam and John, is just in the transition plan. Just for Kim to note that the board is committed to making sure that our foreign language is a focus. And that, you know, we're looking to kind of step up our presence both in the school and in the community with our commitment to that. That sound, I'm seeing you not so.
I'm taking, I'm making notes. So I gotcha. Yeah.
And Scott, thanks. I think that was great insight. Appreciate it. Does anyone else have any other things that they would like to add to that discussion? Any questions for Danielle while she's with us? Because she's been so great hanging on. So happy.
I will just mention that fifth and sixth grade this year did have a little bit of exposure to the grading within power, the same way that AMS does. I talked really briefly at the open house in September with the sixth grade parents with Mrs. Garno and Mrs. Anderson. I probably didn't do as good of a job as I would going forward, knowing to address it, that it is the equivalent of Spanish one at AMS, but it did get a little bit of a peak this year just to see. And then obviously it folded a little bit with the change in plans. But get, we have gotten the just barely gotten the ball rolling with, this is the way it will look in Empower.
Great. Thank you, Danielle. Steve?
We just make sure that we check in with the middle school folks in the fall to see how that that transition actually took place from a language standpoint, make sure that we are addressing the the proper the proper areas. I know that's where the shortfall existed last time.
John, would you mind taking that?
I think I know somebody who could handle that. Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll look into it for you.
Thanks very much. Pete, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say one thing that, and I don't know the dynamics of building out the schedule at the school, but is it worth time and energy to figure out? Instead of three times in two weeks, how do we get it to four times in two weeks? Is that is that doable with now suffering other other areas? And my other thought was if we have a group of students who are interested in pursuing a deeper learning cycle with a foreign language, and I can't for the life of me, I've been sitting here trying to think of the name of the programs that they advertise all the time for older folks, but are there electronic online programs that the school district would purchase and make available to students that they can do at a self pace to enhance their experience at the school? Just throwing it out.
John?
Actually, you already have one. It's called Raca Lingua. It's a fantastic program and Danielle has made a great use of it for students to complete and work through. It's, I would have to say, and I think you're thinking Rosetta Stone. I would say without looking at Rosetta Stone much, I think it's a much better product and much more student friendly when it comes to the exposure and the common language and the common spelling or speaking of it. So it's really a great program. So you actually are very invested in one. We just want to make, we just want to again, refuse that that's such a great tool that students should be using it and they get views of it at school, but they actually have more access to it at home. That again, is almost like that flip classroom without flipping too much where they could be doing work in it and as assignments. And I think would it probably guarantee more fluency in the language if used more consistently.
Great. Scott, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just, I just want to caution to be careful with with the digital things and learning a language. It doesn't replace the social aspect that's needed for fluency and it could be good to work on the little things in the vocabulary building, but it doesn't replace grammar structures with with a teacher. So I agree with Peter when it says like, can we get this to four times over two weeks? You know, it'd be great ideal for sure. And and you know, with our newfound knowledge of how can we use digital tools and distance learning to to supplement this? But just be cautious because it's not like, not like learning history, you can't go home, watch History Channel, you know, everything about the Mexican American War. You can't just turn on the Mexican channel and all of a sudden you know everything about Spanish. It just doesn't work that way. We need a a competent, good teacher to to help guide that, especially at the elementary levels, you know. So I think we could find a good balance and that would be phenomenal, but we need to err on the side of more person, less digital in the language for for true acquisition.
Well, Scott, just for reference, we did years ago have a full time language program, like we had a full time teacher and that got bumped down because of, well, voters made cuts. And I think that, you know, we've got a board right now that certainly sees the value in trying to bump that back up again when we're able to. And I would just hope that the community sees that, you know, there is value in language and being able to get our kids, you know, on par with where the kids are in AMS, that there's value in that. And hopefully that, you know, in the years to come, we'll be able to garner more support. But I think it's great out of the box thinking to be able to get us there. And Danielle's been so. And Danielle's been so phenomenal this year. So I know, I don't think I would be. Speaking out of turn to say that the board is very thankful for her efforts in pulling things together and really stepping it back up. We, we appreciate it. For sure. And John, thank you for your efforts in that as well.
Of course.
Anyone else have anything they want to add to that conversation? Okay, I'm seeing nothing, then I don't know that we have a non-public need tonight. I don't think that we do. It's, John?
I just, sorry, I wanted to add one more thing. If we're about to. Close out the meeting, that's all. I have one other thing to share.
Please.
Okay, so just thinking of placements, I'm about to send out the letter to families to let them know that we have just started into placement process for students for next year. But we're going to have a change in the information when it comes to sharing that placement. Before the end of the school year, just due to our timeline and right now with remote learning, we feel like we need a little bit more time. So I'm moving us forward to the area that we would actually announce placement in August. Such as happens at the middle and the high school level. I feel like it'd just give us more time. It's always been a challenge, I have to admit, at the end of the year to try to get that done. And this year has been even more of a challenge remotely trying to work with staff and trying to get information from families, which I'm about to begin to send that letter out. Requesting any information they want to share with us. But I just wanted you to be aware that we're going to move that placement decision not to be the last day of school because we don't have the time to do it this year, nor would it look like a traditional kind of step up day. So what I will have is the staff meet with students. So as an example. In a video conference, we'll have first grade students in a video conference with their current teachers and they'll meet next year's teachers as being. The two teachers that will be teaching second grade next year and talk about topics and events that will happen and what they're looking forward to. Maybe even do an activity with them of some sort video wise and then get to know the students. And then hand them back to their first grade counterparts. So that'll happen across the grades. Again, just meeting the staff and getting to know that they're both going to be there next year. It's really a K three issue more so than anything because four, five, six, obviously they get every teacher that there is to have. But again, just wanted you to be aware that placement decisions will be made, but not announced till August.
Great.
John, are we not allowing those teachers to follow the cohort? I thought we were planning to do that.
Well, we had talked about that. The challenge with following with the cohort is that we didn't feel necessarily like thinking of that September start. And where staff were at and where students would be at would be necessarily the best change at this time. Begin, remember that we don't have a planned out summer yet and thinking about what it would be to get those staff up. On full speed with the next year's curriculum, because none of them have taught the, as I checked in with them, they have not taught the following year's curriculum. As well, or if ever. So the challenge there to get that planning and that PD in place and time to do that was really concerning to us. So we decided not to. There was a decision also considered and talked about between the two elementary schools. Of us and Amherst deciding whether we would have students loop because again, the consistency of having that group together to be handed off to one teacher. So that that teacher, as you can imagine, in larger schools, especially. It's like five or six or seven classes are being mixed to be put forth with a new class. That new teacher receives students who are coming from five or six or seven different professionals. And if they ever needed to get information that wasn't necessarily at their fingertips, I wanted to know some more information, they'd be hunting to look for each teacher. So I totally get that aspect of having the group go forward potentially, though it's not always the best because again, there's certain. Personalities that cannot continue forward in the same group. So we're weighing that option, but I also look at just our small school. You know, if I'm teaching second grade and I got to talk to a third grade teacher, even if I have half, which typically is what happens, I get a half mix. The two teachers I have to talk to are across the hall. So I don't, again, I don't feel like that worked as best of a plan either. Especially if we only have a couple of moves, I almost feel like we'd have to make more of them just to not have certain students stand out as being the only person who's not in that class anymore. It is a discussion though. I will let you know the looping discussion is not going away. That is something that will continue to talk. I think I see great benefits of it. I had the, I'd say the rare. But in my career path, when I was teaching sixth grade at a middle school level, I actually looped and it was not intentional. But I went forward to seventh grade for the next two years, but that first year I had my entire sixth grade come with me. Not my plan, but that's what happened. Thanks to administration. It was incredible year, I would say personally. And there's a few staff on our roster who have had that experience. We actually did that and I forgot, Charlene Brown, when she taught fifth grade, went up to sixth grade and she actually went with a group. And talks about the benefits as well of what experience she had.
And Dawn Garnell.
Correct. Yes, same thing. You're right.
Cool.
Great. Any concerns about the transition for, for our sixth graders heading down to AMS next year? I know we talked about it briefly in the SAU board meeting, but any issues?
Me, sorry, in particular?
Or Adam?
I don't. I hear there's a really nice guy who's going to be the assistant principal there and will love every second of being with them. So that'll be a blast. I don't think so. I, I think if any concerns, I mean, thankfully they can address it with me directly. At this point, they all have my phone number. So that's a little scary, but exciting at the same time. I think, I think it's going to be a good year. It's going to be a great transition.
Good. And any specifics on the sixth grade graduation that? Any ideas? No, nothing. I know it's a hard one. And I know parents are asking, so I just feel like we should have it in our minutes just for the sake of having it there because it's a hard one.
There are some ideas. We're bouncing some ideas back and forth.
Okay.
Grade room moms have talked about it, but there's no, right?
If, if we can have a high school graduation, we can probably find a way to have a sixth grade promotion ceremony.
Yes.
Always rent the Verizon Wireless Center and have social distancing there.
We could spread out.
I don't want to be that close to any of you. Sorry.
All right. Well, I want to thank everyone for their time. Does the board have anything else that you want to bring up before we adjourn? No, okay, seeing nothing.
Actually, one thing mentor. So I've got somebody from, so he and somebody from Amherst, anyone looking to be a mentor?
If you need someone to be a mentor.
Wants to be a mentor.
I, I will be happy to do it if you need.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, Steve. That's a really great idea for.
I think that's a fabulous idea. So excited to have you as our SAU board chair, by the way. We haven't talked about that here, but we're proud to have you represent.
It's going to be a challenge once we start meeting live and while Vernon meetings being down there, but we'll talk about that later on.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yep.
John, did you have anything else that you wanted to chime in?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so.
Only has one more meeting and then he's done.
But you have another meeting tonight?
No.
Oh, no, just in general, like, oh.
Um, okay. Well, I don't think we technically need a motion to adjourn. I think we can just go right ahead and do it. So I will thank everyone for their time. It's been a long evening. I appreciate your attention and, and just pulling things together and making education in Mont Vernon a priority. So thanks all. Have a great night. Appreciate you.
And I.
Adjourn at 10:14. Thank you.